I thought he was gonna respond.
I mean, we signed.
Were you going to address the water tank cleaning that I have to go to committee? Because there seemed to be a long reverency there about those people being in the neighborhood and going back home and the fat ones being cleaned.
No, I'll bring that up in the -- We'll bring that up in a jury meeting. It doesn't have to be addressed at this point. July.
Okay. The ordinance committee met with five ordinances to consider, two of which were rejected, and so we won't deal with them this time. First ordinance, by the way, the ordinances are posted back there. First ordinance deals with the cancellation of surplus balances, and I will give you my first reading at this point. An ordinance authorizing the cancellation of the surplus balances in the 2013-2014 budget for the city of Louisiana. Do I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept first reading ordinance.
Second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, a question on surplus. I know there's outstanding debts that we owe from last year's budget. Can't -- will that be transferred on over into the new year's budget or will it say snow removal? I'm just wondering if that's how that would transfer.
They can't.
You can't transfer anything. It gets canceled out.
So we can't pay anything prior to June 1st out of this year's budget? That's all I was wanting to clarify.
Okay, so go back to the jury. So, there's no more discussion. Mr. Caroll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Yay.
Mr. Gay?
Yay.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Okay, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the cancellation of the surplus balances in the 2013-2014 budget for the city of Louisiana. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Point of order.
Yes.
Is posted, still require two full readings?
Two readings, but just by title.
Not full, just by title.
Thank you.
Please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens? Uh, Mrs. Smith? I'm sorry.
What did you just say?
Abstain. I get ahead of myself, Mr. Stevens.
Yay.
What would you say?
I don't know. Couldn't be repeated here.
You're right.
Second, an ordinance establishing the salaries of the city administrator, city attorney, city prosecutor, chief of police, city judge, city treasurer, city clerk, city collector, fire chief, entire truck driver, custodian for the term -- fire truck driver, custodian for the terms of July 2014 through May of 2015. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept, one second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Okay. I like this strictly for the record and documented. We have been in discussions, Mayor, some issues, and this will be setting the salaries specifically for a year's time. One of the issues that I have been aware, I've been alluded to earlier, is we have a city employee that is receiving free water from the city, that they're amowing utility bills, their gas and electric is being paid by the city. They grow W2, and we are also issuing 1099. My understanding that this really is a perception that needs to be corrected, and I believe the administration feels that it needs to be corrected as well, and it's been relayed to me that it's going to be attempted to be corrected by mid-year. The problem is, we're already established ordinance right now that's good for a whole year. So, that is a concern. I think it is improper, in my opinion, to be giving a city employee free services, free utility bills, through ammering. There is no contract, there is no city ordinance stating as such. There is no rights of this given by any previous council maybe in minutes a decade ago. And there's a lot of history there. So I wanted to clear for the record my objection to this ordinance, specifically this item.
Are you talking about item? Which item are you talking about for the public?
Engineer, the fire truck driver.
Fire truck driver, custodian.
Yes, and it's not my intent to go through the history right now of why and everything else, though, Mayor, the like.
Well, you say it's not your intent, but you've already laid out one side of the discussion, so I think that you've already done it. The fact is that this is something that has been inherited and passed on from a very reasonable circumstance, originated when the person holding this position lived in the same building as City Hall. So paying the electric bill and the water bill was as much a matter of convenience as anything else. It is not free. We do not give free services to someone. It is a part of the compensation that, for the work that is done by this individual. That's why we do it. It is perceived by that individual that way. So, Jeff brought this to me. I agree, I don't like the oddity of this situation. It doesn't make sense anymore. Doesn't live in this hall building anymore. So, I met with the chief and the employee, and we discussed it, and I believe, and if judging from what Ms. Morris presented earlier, let me agree that maybe there's some dissent I'm not aware of, or it was left with me was that this was an agreeable thing to alter. I asked for the number that would be required to make this individual feel compensated equally to come from him and his accountant. He came back to me with a number that was less than we already pay him. I said, "I think you have an error. I'm glad to pay you less, but maybe you'd like to take a little longer and we'll do this again." So he has, and he's come back with a new number today. This is, in my mind, something that we can address easier through the mid-year budget, primarily because the mid-year budget that I will present to you, unlike the document that we use, that we made some substantial steps forward, I think, as a budgeting tool, will have a component that has all of our human resources listed and how we pay them, every position, and so it will be reflected in there so we can have the discussion in context. And so, so this is being addressed, this administrative issue is being addressed, and I anticipate a real conversation, real numbers in the mid-year budget, and I will revisit it with both the chief and the employee to see if there is any reason not to move forward as much as we were in agreement that this was.
So, looking at a mid-year budget, we'd have to be looking at refilling this ordinance?
Or amending it.
Or amending it.
Either one of which is critical.
Is it permissible to pay an employee a 1099 and payroll?
That's a good question.
That was the way we were told by the auditor.
We were advised to do it that way?
But the auditor, not an attorney. He might be okay with you. What about Mr. Rapp?
I think you probably can do it unless it's prohibited by an ordinance or prohibited by state law. So it's, the test is, is it inconsistent with state law?
I'm not sure that we're doing it exactly right, and we could spend some time looking into that. Because of 1099, they really are privately contracting for some effort outside of that we don't have any of those agreements in place, et cetera. In essence, we have an understanding with this employee that they receive certain benefits in return for doing certain work. It is agreeable to both parties. So I think in terms of good faith, everything's fine right now where it is. We are cleaning up this problem, and going back and fixing the way we're doing it now doesn't make a lot of sense when we don't have any, I just don't have time. Let's get it fixed going forward, and I think we have a course laid out to do that.
I don't know that it's, you know, there's anything wrong in it, it's just a novelty. You know, we don't do other employees that way, it's just a rare thing to happen.
Yes, we have, we have a first and a second for the first reading.
Excuse me? Because since this employee's name is on the ordinance and the final numbers, I think the ordinance should be restricted to his name and salary off of it to complete the ordinance properly, then we just keep him where he is. Because if you put him, if that's ordinance, then you are setting his salary.
Same as last year. Okay, it, uh...
That's a good point.
Can we, can we not amend to that at a later date? Is this a preparation? Is that why?
The problem is, this is the ordinance that was posted.
Yes.
This is the one that was directed.
No, I understand that what this means is we have to, we can actually read the whole thing and its entirety twice tonight and exclude that and still pass it with that exception. So, so we can, it's gonna be a late night. We can move forward and strike that, but my question is, if we want to change one of those things later in the year, is that a possibility? Can we amend that ordinance or?
Yeah, because this is a point of office that's described in the ordinance that I saw. Well, yes, you could.
Now, this is appointed. It shouldn't be, but...
Well, it is a one of the...
That's a question.
That's a really, that's a really good point.
You know, the ordinance has set out certain appointive offices, like the city clerk and the city administrator. That's one thing. Is this in the same category as that?
No, it shouldn't be. It hasn't treated that.
That's a whole new can of worms.
Yes, it is.
It depends on where you look. If one place has said yes and one place says no. If that's been tradition, then tradition has to be ruled.
Well, if you're appointing a course of action.
Mayor? Would you recommend a course of action to rule this law?
So does this figure include what we're paying in the extra stuff?
No.
No, I'm...
Always get correct. If you change this downwardly, is this person gonna say it's right? Worst case... Well, the worst case scenario is you can't change a compensation during the term, particularly downward. I, I'm not sure that this is, you know, the type of office that that's intended, those rules are intended to apply to. It's definitely intended to apply to elected officials. But they can't affect vote themselves on a raise. It has to take effect with the subsequent administration and life rise and office holder, particularly a judge's salary. I think you should reduce because you don't like the holdings that make it. Why would this person complain if it's gonna be a downward amendment?
I don't, I'm not recommending anything if they're not happy with it.
Yeah.
I don't know, you had, you had a point of order?
The point of order was, the whole point of me bringing this up wasn't to change anything on this ordinance. The whole point of me bringing it up is for the record, we, we aren't agreeing on these be cleared out in the, in the, after mid-year. If we can do that at the mayor, or the city attorney says we can do that through an amendment, the only question I had was, since this was being treated like an appointed position, can we amend it? You know, if we're, if we're given a term of an annual term? That's, that's the question I had.
Well, whether it's, whether we or anybody has treated this like an appointed office, if it's not an appointed office, legally it's not. And treating it as such doesn't make it, doesn't get really good.
So then at a later date, we can actually amend this by removing, totally treat him like a salary employee.
Which would be a really great thing to do, yes.
Because right now, we're dividing this guy's salary out of two different line ranges.
I think so, but I'm doing this, I'm coming to this opinion kind of on the fly without thinking a lot about it.
I do not anticipate problems proceeding by voting on this and passing it and making this correction in the year. I mean, I'm, I am not willing to support doing anything that isn't in agreement with this employee, so...
I don't think that's anyone's intention.
Right, right. And so with that, with that caveat, I don't see that there's gonna be any problem moving forward after this, then we've got to correct it, right? That's really where we want to be.
Your employee, not personally?
No.
Can I ask you?
So, at this point, I will call for a, we have a motion in a second of first reading.
Mr. Carter?
President.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Second reading of the ordinance. An ordinance establishing the salaries of the city administrator, city attorney, city prosecutor, chief of police, city judge, city treasurer, city clerk, city collector, fire chief, entire truck, truck, fire truck driver, custodian for the terms of June 2014 through May of 2015. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call Roll.
President.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Okay, the third one. An ordinance appropriating money from the various departments of the city of Louisiana, Missouri, in the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2014, and ending May 31st, 2015. Do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept first reading.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
An ordinance appropriating money for the various departments of the city of Louisiana, Missouri, for the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2014, and ending May 31st, 2015. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Discussion? Please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
And that's it?
Let's reach out. All right, of course, the special committee, city administrator, we've already handed a change of orders. Do we have an update on the II plan? Have you talked to Mark?
Uh, yes, they, um, application has been received by the state revolving fund for the II.
Do we need any help, sir?
No, sir.
Human relations is here, board of adjustment is here, unless you ask something. Economic development is here, historic preservation commission is not here, unless you...
We met, Lori is working on the papers that we need to submit, and who has any chance of...
Um, I did hear something from Tracy, um, a couple of appointments I was due here. Can you review the understanding of the terms, all the memberships, individual terms, and check that out with the city clerk and make sure that you are on the same page? It looks to me like you may be in the year, the years that somebody...
That's very probable, because I heard...
So if there is some corrective action we need to take to get back into the proper order of things, then we should discuss it as council, but if you would take that back to HPC?
We don't have enough members, but...
I will hopefully resolve that tomorrow. Okay. Reduction of resolutions, I don't have any new business. Okay, ordinance. I would like to have a motion to accept the appointment of Robert Brown to the Board of Appeals as a member for 2014 to 2016.
I make a motion to accept the mayor's appointment?
Second?
Discussion? Please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
I have some...
I have not a lot. I know we stepped out. Still not with a lot of...
Uh, Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Go ahead.
Robert Brown, Board of Appeals?
Yes.
And, so, I guess it's okay. I would also like to have a motion appointing Tracy Dillander Kingsley to the Board of Appeals as a member of 2014, 2016.
Can you, I don't know this person, can you just tell me something about him?
I, I selected Robert Brown because of his contracting position. I selected Tracy Dillander Kingsley because of her ability to research and understand critical thinking and application of documents. She's a teacher.
She's a teacher.
That's one area.
I also believe her to have a very fair, moral approach to think she will not bring personal agenda to this.
And what year is it just?
It's 2014, 2016.
I make a motion to accept the mayor's appointment of Tracy Dillander Kingsley to the Board of Appeals.
Second?
Please, any discussion? Please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
I would like a motion to accept my appointment of Ricky DePass to the Board of Adjustment as a member for 2014, 2016. Ricky was recommended to me.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, can you read that motion to me back, Sharon? We are coming out of the Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
That name sounds, who is that? That name sounds familiar. I don't know.
Her.
Obviously, I forgot who that was.
Do you want to speak on her behalf?
Yeah, she's, uh, she's an employee of mine. She is, uh, she's actually works in one of our departments of handling computers and stuff like that. She's a very detailed person. She actually has a safety committee. She's the type of person that researches diligently. I think this is a good spot for her.
Are these residents of Louisiana, or is it necessary?
In these cases, it is necessary, and they are. So we have a motion in a second, correct?
Yes.
And we had discussion, please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Thank you. I would like a motion to accept my nomination of Susie Rehberg to the Board of Adjustment, member 2014, 2016.
I make a motion to accept your nomination, Susie Rehberg. Second?
Discussion? She has a tremendous interest in being involved.
Coming to one of these things, I don't know about that.
We have a motion in a second. Please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Thank you. I would like a motion to accept my appointment of Latanya Chapman to the Human Relations as a Human Relations member, 2012 to 2015. I make a motion.
2012?
2012, 2015, what did you say?
2012 to 2015?
2014. Oh, you know what? This, this is a vacant seat. It's actually to a position that is for 2012 to 2015, but it's a vacant seat, so filling the remainder of the vacancy through 2015.
Latanya is, you speak Griffith, is that right?
Yes.
And she's against what?
Yes. And I second, I think. Jeff made the motion.
Okay, discussion. This is Human Relations, Human Relations. Thank you. Please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Dr. Green has given his resignation for the HPC. He's not here right now, so I'm gonna say a few kind words to him and thank him. He's been leading the HPC here recently. I would like to have approval to appoint to the remainder of his seat through 2015 to the Historic Preservation Commission, Bryce Chandler. The young guy is on ALI DC, very intelligent. I'll make that motion. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Please call Roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Darnell?
President.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Mrs. Houghlin?
Yay.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
And it's been brought to my attention that Mr. Sutter's seat on the HPC is technically vacant because of a lack of titties. Correct?
Sutter.
Sutter?
Sutter.
Sutter. So I would like to appoint to the remainder of his term, which is a member through 2015 to Historic Preservation Commission, Sally Cropp.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Is she interested to?
All of these people have accepted this, these nominations. I'm not, I'm not people that I...
I just, you know, I play that criteria for the board, that's why I asked.
She is a long-term volunteer, very active with the museum, and given we don't have a lot of architects and archaeologists to choose from, that's about as close as I can get to something appropriate for the HPC.
I make a motion in a second?
Yeah, okay. They all turned me down, and I no longer have any reasonably informed ability to recommend a specific alternate attorney. It was with conflict in my heart that I approached Mr. Rapp and discussed my concerns, our history, the future of Louisiana, and the role of city attorney. I believe the universe conspires to teach us lessons, and this may be one such circumstance. It was a very good conversation that we had. Mr. Rapp and I do not see eye to eye on every issue in our past, which still remains, but I do believe that we have an excellent understanding of a common path forward. We have both pledged to work diligently and with open minds towards a common agenda of caution and transparency for our local government. At this time, I feel that Mr. Rapp deserves the opportunity to put his professional skills to our vision under this new administration. Further, I believe Mr. Rapp to be the best choice for legal counsel available within Louisiana's means and circumstance. I ask for the council to approve the appointment of Robert Rapp as our city attorney.
I make a motion to check through for a recommendation.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion? I do have a question.
I've been in this area about, well, maybe two years since. I grew up in this area and then moved away and then came back. One of the things that troubled me was that I saw something about, quote in the, in the paper, something regarding the long lines of the sunshine law. And how, I understand the administration's frustration with hearing about the sunshine law, how to get that, but to threaten to sue an individual over that. Do you want to elaborate on that, or you want to?
I thought I clarified that when I wrote a letter and had, and asked it to be published in the paper, that that is not the city's policy. But if any individual, whether in public or private, defames another individual, people are free to have access to the courts. So, we all have to be mindful of what we say, just for that reason. But that was not city's policy to take anybody to court ever, and I thought I clarified that in, in that pretty lengthy letter. And in fact, the city has not taken anybody to court, nor consulted with me about doing that. So, people are free to speak, but, you know, kinda like they say, the genie's out of the bottle. So, once we say things.
Sure.
It's sometimes difficult to take them back. And sometimes, we all wish we could take back things, I'm sure. So, have I answered your question?
I pondered on this question a long time. We talked earlier before the meeting, and I was all set to vote no, because of just what you said, and I did not like what happened during the impeachment. I, I think some things happened that should not have happened. And so, after pondering, I have decided that while I would not hire Mr. Rapp as a lawyer, the city is in a bad situation if we don't. And so, I guess I don't want to send you the names of people who I would consider.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, we've had this discussion, and I want to reiterate, and I know you know this, Mr. Rapp. You, you work at the pleasure of the mayor and the city council. My hopes for anyone sitting in your seat, so don't, I apologize if it seems like it's a lecture, it's not. It's just a vote, or it's a vote of confidence, but with an understanding that all the council members and the public need to understand, that you represent the city of Louisiana in our best interest. And that will come to points that you disagree with the administration, and that will come to points that you disagree with the council. I want you to voice your opinion regardless.
If I can address that, and everything that's been discussed here, Robert and I discussed, including this point, I made it very, very clear that I expect some, him to nudge me, tell me, give me a note, let me know, when he feels that I'm headed down a not the safest, most conservative, most transparent path that I can take with government. That that's, that I, I think the way I said it is, I want to keep me out of jail, lawyer, not a, not a get me out of jail, lawyer. Okay? And so, we've had that conversation, and, and, and I would reiterate what Tim was saying, and just as public, and as a policy for this administration, we are, we are after, you know, an independent thinking. I don't want somebody who's just gonna agree because I'm mayor or because you're council. I need that professional righteousness.
So, that's the only thing I'd want to bring, and I hope, I know that you can bring that to the table, and, but I do this more for everyone's benefit, not just yours. I know you have this.
Yes, the client is the city, which is incorporated. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. We've concluded discussion. Please call Roel.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Donnell?
No.
Mr. Gay?
No.
Mrs. Houghey?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
No.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
It's a tie vote, and the mayor makes his decision for the reasons given, yes. I, you know, a lot of times we walk away from controversial or wishful vote, and there's a lot on this, and we don't acknowledge the fact that, I recognize everyone, a very, very difficult decision just now, and I appreciate every one of those votes, whether they're the same as mine or not.
I just wanted to know, is nothing personal, nothing personal?
Yeah. So, from this point forward, I do hope that we can have an open mind and go towards something that absolutely works. So, I, I thank everyone for, for doing a difficult job. I'd also like to ask that the city clerk send written request to all committee members